Rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fellow board members, welcome, welcome, welcome to Cabinet and faculty and the bazillions of people out here in the unknown. Good to have all of you and those of you who will be seeing us on OCTV. Thank you, thank you for being here, by the way. Thank you very much. All right. Ms. Shaver?
Yes.
How about attendance?
I will. Yep. President Donnelly?
Here.
Vice President Griffith? Absent. Secretary Shaker here. Treasurer Bailey?
Here.
Trustee Alessandro?
Here.
Trustee Foster is absent. Trustee Hancer present.
Very good, thank you very much. Any changes to the board agenda?
None. None.
Thank you, thank you. Consent agenda, the meeting minutes from March 9th, the closed meeting minutes from March 9th. We have bills payable for March 2021. I'm looking for someone to put this motion on the floor. Dan?
Move to approve, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you very much for your support. Mary's support, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education, number one is an update on property purchase and sell. Mr. Thrillen, is that you?
Yes, it is. So why don't we talk about the Drainer Road property first? Basically, we have submitted the purchase agreement. We have entered our window, a 90-day window to close. And so we have, I think maybe we're 30 days in on that window. So we've got a little less than two months left. Most likely, we'll use the entire amount of time left just because there are so many things that we're checking. We're bringing in, you know, a roof expert to just make sure we know the status of the roof. We're bringing in township experts, making sure that we know what we have in regards to water and sewer, what we don't have. Checking the asphalt, checking the paving. We're bringing in, I don't know, I'll just call it like a past control person, make sure that we don't have, you know, bats or any other type of rodent that we, you know, don't know about. Basically, all those things that you just can't see from the naked eye. We're just, we're doing our due diligence as well as obviously going back and making sure that we've got all the correct paperwork and title work and all that kind of stuff. So we are forging forward. We have not found anything to date that is of concern or anything that, any red flag. If there is anything that does come up, I will make sure that I alert you and let you know where we're at, but we're just working towards it. So why don't I stop there, see if there's any, any other concerns or questions.
Dan?
Thank you. Not so much a concern as much as a question. Do we have like in our minds or in our thought process of going through, what's too much? Like renovation wise or all of a sudden we're thinking like we're over $500,000, $750,000? Is there an idea that we have that it's a red line, no, this is way too much?
So maybe I'll answer it this way. A very conservative amount for us to build a new building, I would say is $200 a square foot. Just the mother house on that property is 55,000 square feet. If we were to go replicate and build that new, obviously this is 20 years old or so, you're talking $11 million. So from that standpoint, I mean, there's tremendous value in us, not only in the property, but obviously in the buildings. You know, I would, I would hesitate to put a number on it right now just because we don't know, we're still doing our due diligence. But, I mean, if you're gonna say, if you were to say, Tim, between now and, let's say, the next five years, what's the max number that you would look to put into that facility for any type of upgrades or that kind of thing that you'd wanna do? I don't know. I guess I'd probably use that $11 million number. If I gotta throw out a number, that's what it would cost me today if I were gonna do something new. Do I think we're gonna come anywhere near that? No, I don't. But, you know, are we gonna have to run fiber in there? Yep, we're gonna have to run fiber. You're gonna have to put wireless access units in there? Yep, we're gonna have to do that. But nothing more or extraordinary than what we'd have to do, you know, even if we were to build a new place. So I know that really doesn't answer your question specifically, but I don't know, does that help?
It doesn't specifically, but it's kinda, it does help. I just, my reasoning for answering, asking the question was, in today's price, I think $200 a square foot is low considering what some contractors are getting. I would say it's probably $275,000, but that's just me because I know that the requirements for students to be in a facility is much greater than it would be if we were saying, you know, we're just gonna use this to house staff. Well, if the minute we put a student in, the game changes. So I think that $11 million number is very low in my, in my mind, given.
It probably is. I'm just, yeah, I'm trying to get a ballpark.
Yep, I get it and I appreciate it. So I just, I, that helps, it does.
Anyone else? Oh, yes, everybody.
But just to kind of clarify for the public more, cause you and I have talked a little bit, but you know, isn't that one of the reasons why you're having like asphalt companies and these different companies come and kind of give you a ballpark? This is what it would cost to get this, to get the parking lot up to code or this is, you know, that requires for a parking lot versus where that, that would give you that number to me, that's what we start to buy that new.
Yes.
You know, so we'll know a little bit more down the line.
Exactly true. We're trying to get, you know, accurate estimates, not only if we have to do something right away, but when we go to do something, we'll have an idea of how much that's gonna cost us to do. And obviously, we don't have to do everything on day one because we're not looking to move all of our programs in there on day one either, right? And so, you know, we'll, we'll figure that out, we'll move the programs in as fast as we can and when we're ready, yeah, and then just, you know, take off some of those projects one at a time and get them.
Thank you, Heather. Anyone else? All right, let's move on.
All right. So now we're talking about the Coach Road property that Sam has successfully, I guess, put up for sale. We do have a listing out there and just before we came here, Sam told me that we have received our first offer of the property. I don't know any of the details or anything like that, but just to let you know, it is listed. We have received an offer already. We'll probably, I don't know, sit and wait at least for, I don't know, at least a little while maybe. And, you know, at that point, I will come back to the board, let you know the details of the offer or offers, and then you all will make a decision whether you want to accept an offer or hang onto the property depending on what the offer is. Again, it's up to you guys. Just so you know, so when we had the appraisal done, comps were sold in around, I don't know, I'm gonna say 10,000 to 12,000 an acre, that kind of thing. There was some existing vacant land up for sale that was listed at the $13,000 an acre range, and that is what we actually listed this at. So if you're asked, that's, we did not list it with a range, we listed it at the $13,000 an acre, which was similar to, like I said, some other listings that are out there, but they have not sold at that amount per acre. So just more info so you know it in case you're asked.
What is the listing price?
$315,000.
Roughly 24 acres, 24 acres at $13,000.
There was, at the last meeting, there was some conversations about some technicality issues, history that you needed to study to know whether the monies, remember because of ownership and the school district and how they acquired it? Have you guys got an answer to those questions?
Go ahead.
Um, yes, so actually we were visited today by CJ from, formerly of the Oxford leader, and he was obviously with the township right now. He was able to bring to us documents from the Oxford leader, articles basically detailing the district's path for this property back in 1973 and 1974. So we purchased, the district purchased this property for $1,500 per acre and it was a little over 100 acres, as we may have alluded to at the last board meeting. This money was, it actually came from, to the best of my knowledge, finding this information out today, specifically about the dates, an operating village money.
What was that, a levy?
Operating village money, sorry, operating village.
Which is what?
So basically a sinking fund. So you're levelling a levy, if you will, to the taxpayers in the area. And so rather than bonding for it and selling bonds, you actually levy an operating village. Similar to how, you know, Oxford Township and how the district's done like sinking funds, still has a sinking fund, you levy a certain millage rate. And so that's how they were able to, to the best of my knowledge from this information today, afford this property back in 1973 at $1,500 an acre.
And so Sam, once sold, then is there any other obligation than to put the money in our account? And secondly, then?
There's not.
What account does it go into or is that a premature question?
No, it's not premature at all. So that would be at the board's discretion. We could put it into the general fund if you so chose, or we could put it into the capital project fund.
So that'll become part of the decision-making when we sell?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear to the public and us, so thank you. Any other comments or questions on the Coach property? Mary?
Yep. So just for clarification, you're referring to it as coming from operating village, that doesn't have the same restrictions that a bond would, correct?
Correct. And what you also need to remember, so this was early 70s to mid 70s, this is prior to proposal A. So maybe a better way to think of it is, you know, back in the 70s, local school districts raised their millage locally. They didn't get 80% of their funding from state sales tax from the state. And so when Sam talks about passing the millage, that was a part of their local millage to run Oxford schools on a regular basis. All right? And so the big thing to, I guess, just understand out of that is we don't have any bonds that we have to pay back, therefore, once, once this land is sold, if you choose to sell it, you can do whatever you want with proceeds because that was paid for by the local taxpayer in Oxford. It was not paid for by bonds and there's nothing to pay back or anything like that.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the property? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the Oxford Schools 2021, '22 proposed general budget. Angela, we decided today to put this in because we're gonna be making a decision on this next meeting, and so this is your chance to have it a month early and to look at what it is that we're gonna be voting on. And so there's really nothing to do except for you to pay attention to it and to know that it's here for us to digest and be ready to make a decision. Tim?
So just a couple of things. I, I don't know if I just heard you wrong, but this is Oakland Schools.
I didn't say that.
I said Oxford.
Did I say Oxford?
I think so. All right. So this is Oakland Schools budget. You all need to vote on that. And just a reminder, Mr. Bailey is your rep to Oakland Schools. And so I would suggest that if you have questions or want more information, you probably should funnel that through Mr. Bailey and then he can, you know, get back with you in regards to their budget. I don't know if I would really be of any help to you. All right?
Yep.
Okay. Tim, the mistake on the Oakland Schools, Oxford Schools, I'm still throwing off that Sam Barna thought that 1970s was really far away. Being, being one of the oldest guys in the room, that was kind of like, ugh. We went into the archives and found the stone tablets and... Thanks a lot, Sam.
Well, actually, I'm age myself, I was born in 1970.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Sam, you're up. Finance and operations? Bus and camera office?
Yes.
As everyone's aware, at the last board meeting, the board approved the purchase of 19 school buses through the bond. This is the separate purchase of the cameras for these buses and then an additional camera for one of our existing buses. This would be coming from our 2020 bond proceeds. Again, that's where the bus revenue, or that's where the bus expenditures are coming from as well. So I just wanted to put that forward and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Sam, I just wanna make sure that these are internal cameras, correct? These are not external so we can see if there was an accident? This is an internal camera, camera system?
It is an internal camera, but there's actually, I think, a feature as well, and maybe, Anne is, Anne, would you mind coming up here if you don't mind and maybe give me a little bit more of a background of these cameras? I believe there is a feature where you can see either 360 or also see...
Or try an Eagle Eye lens?
I believe so.
Sorry. So they are internal cameras, they have a DVR box that is in the bulkhead of the buses, and then we have four cameras that operate off of that DVR. The cameras themselves are 180 view lenses, so they kind of angle down so that you can see down inside the seats. So when they raise the seat backs on school buses, it became difficult from forward-facing or rear-facing cameras to be able to see kids other than the tops of their heads. So we actually have the cameras mounted so they can see down in. And then just, part of it, I talked to, before we ordered these cameras several years ago, same systems, I had a conversation with Officer Lowworth regarding stop arm cameras, which are a big thing right now. So these are cameras that are actually mounted on the side of the bus, on the exterior to catch people who are running reds. Okay? And at that time, the technology was a lot newer, they made some advances with those. We decided, after talking to Officer Lowworth, I think I may have involved Sam in this, to instead of doing the stop arm cameras, we went with a forward-facing camera inside the bus. So we actually have, one of the cameras is mounted pretty much like by the door, by the stepwell, and it faces outside so we can kind of see what's going on like with kids crossing buses and stuff like that and they're boarding, parents running. We had caught several running our reds using that camera as our backup. And just as an overall protection, I'm, a couple, about a year and a half ago, one of my buses was setting at the intersection of Mayby and Satchibah, and actually caught when Clarkston's bus involved in an accident. So it was kind of beneficial to them to be able to see that. So it's, we like it, we're like, we've got kids bathing on sidewalks, there's different stuff.
Yeah.
And I have one last question. Once, once the purchase is made, what's your lead time for installation? Do you know that?
The, our installer is a local gentleman here.
Good, good.
He's always been like right on it. Usually the cameras have been in the buses typically prior to them hitting the road in the fall. It's all been dependent on when those buses come in. So we've got him scheduled to come in July 30th as our delivery date. Let's keep our fingers crossed and hoping that that's when we get them, thereabouts. First, we're not sure if our parking lot's gonna be surfaced then, right then or not? So it's all, you know, up in the air, but that's, so Joe Rosenhofer is the gentleman who is gonna be installing and he's, he'll be out of it. So we'll have the cameras in, they should be, and they had them in stock, I talked to him about ordering them. So they should, actually, they should be in my office prior to the buses even arriving.
Fabulous, fabulous. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments or questions for Sam on these?
Will that put cameras in all of the buses or just these new ones? I see one extra, but...
I believe that will cover all of our buses. Anything else?
I'm gonna, I, we'll still have approximately four or five minis that will not have cameras yet. So I wasn't, I wasn't pushing my luck in ordering all like 28 that I might need or whatever. So I did 20 and then we'll do the other ones out of operating budget after that.
Hey, can't you get those spike sticks that the officers use for the people running those lights and eat?
No comment.
Good job. All right. None of you ready for the motion? Yes?
Move to approve the purchase of 20 bus cameras from RFI in the amount of $46,360, as presented.
Thank you, Heather. And support? Mary's support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sam, is that it?
Yes.
Wow. I could almost beat your record, Dan. Only can.
Not even close.
Mr. Pass?
That'll be from Human Resources this evening.
Thank you, sir. Jill Long?
Good evening. As a reminder, we have to maintain an up-to-date preparedness and response plan for COVID-19. We have not come to you with every minute's full change, but we had a few changes that we felt were a little bigger that we wanted to make sure that you were aware of and the community was aware of, so we wanted to bring them to you tonight. You have those edits in your packet. I just wanted to highlight, I'm not gonna go through edit by edit, but there's a few buckets, if you will, that I want to mention. One is with regard to parent meetings under spacing, movement, and access. We do think it's imperative that we start inviting parents back into the buildings. We're not gonna require them, but we're gonna offer now in-person IEPs and other critical meetings. Still definitely offering a Zoom option for those parents who are not comfortable yet attending, or for staff members who aren't comfortable being in the room, allowing them to use Zoom elsewhere in the building. But at least getting our feet wet a little bit with getting parents back in our buildings and definitely wanting them to feel welcome for that. Similarly, we're looking at other visitors who are imperative. So for a speech evaluation, an outside company, that's a bad example, but for certain evaluations, we have different folks come in who are not necessarily staff. A lot of those have been done virtually because of this plan previously and we didn't feel like that was in the best interest of most of our students. So we're inviting those visitors who are helping specific to instruction or to the integrity of student programming to come into the building, following all of our health, you know, safety protocols. In the screening section, we did add CDC policies because previously it was outlined, we will do 14 days, or we'll do 10 days, or we'll do day 11 return for symptomatic students or symptomatic staff. That has changed too many times to count at this point. And so in all those spaces now, it says according to Oakland County Health Division or CDC guidelines, whichever one is in particular dictating it to us. So we don't have to keep changing it back and forth. Under testing protocols, we are no longer at the urging of the Health Department who are inundated currently with cases. We are no longer reporting cases that do not affect the learning or work environment of our students or staff. I do want to say to all of you, I am keeping track of every case I'm aware of and I have a huge, ornate spreadsheet, but I'm not reporting them unless it could have happened, the exposure during the school day or somehow affected the learning environment. So for those cases, you know, that may have come in over spring break, I really appreciate that those families still reported them, that I did not have to report them to the Health Department. So we made that change in our plan to make sure it was accurate. And lastly, with regard to gatherings, in the gathering section, we are changing our determinations of whether a gathering can occur on a case-by-case basis. For most types of gatherings, again, because those rules at the state level through MDHHS have changed so many times, so frequently, instead of switching back and forth and changing the maximum number of participants, we just said we're gonna do it on a case-by-case basis based on local, you know, health guidelines. And lastly, staff meetings in person, we are going to offer staff meetings in person with a Zoom link. Again, staff who are not comfortable can still report to the building, though not have remote access, come to the building and if you're not comfortable being in the larger space, join us through Zoom. Are there any questions?
I have a question, a tangent to this a little bit. A few meetings ago, one of the issues that we were facing, and I think that we even talked about it quite heavily, was our staff having access to vaccines if they wanted them. And we were concerned about the way the state was rolling that out. Where are we at today with our current staff and their ability to be vaccinated if that's what they're choosing to do?
So we're not keeping a record of every member of our staff who is vaccinated. We thought that was sort of an overreach and we don't do that for any other medical things. However, HR department and myself have been working together to come up with vaccination opportunities for our staff. As recently as last week, we sent out one through Honor Health and Oakland County, it's actually through Oakland Schools. To give you an idea of how many people were interested in that, we only had 26 people who were interested. So that says to me that of our entire staff, and I went to everyone at OxfordSchools.org, there's only 26 people who are seeking vaccination and have not yet gotten it.
So then it's safe to say then that we're not in an environment right now where we have our staff sitting concerned because they can't get someplace to get that vaccine?
We've only heard from a few staff members that have had a hard time with their own health systems or things like that. But in general, it doesn't seem to be, at least unless Mr. Pass has ever, I haven't heard an overwhelming cry for that.
Good, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Thank you very much. Oh, oh, Mary?
Thank you, President Donnelly. I just had a quick comment. Congratulations on just rolling with these changes. It's been so much for everybody, I mean, all of us in all these different positions and one day is one thing, the next day is the next thing. And it sounds like the logical approach is to just take it, you know, take it all as it comes and we can judge by what's happening in our community and our county, you know, what we can do. So great work, everybody. It just seems like it keeps going on and on and we keep going, so congratulations. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I think our team has spent a lot of time figuring out what we must do, and then I really wanna say our administration has been amazing at figuring out how to do it because they've been super creative in coming up with ways for kids to have a great school year, so.
I was just thinking back to how, when this all started and Jill and other team members were going through all the governor's orders and picking everything apart and doing them the darn thing. Great.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Would someone like to put this motion on the floor? Yes, please, Heather.
Move to approve the revised 2020, 2021 COVID-19 preparedness and response plan as presented.
Thank you very much. Support? Mary's support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seeing that Mr. Weaver's not here. Hi, Anya.
Okay, I'm back again to present the two-way communications from March. So again, just a quick reminder, because I think we are all experts by now, but the two-way communication is designed to help us just get an idea of just that back and forth, you know, communication with our students, checking in with them in the seated world that is taking daily attendance either hourly or twice a day for elementary. And I'm gonna just actually skip right to, sorry, I feel like this, March and highlighted in the box here. So for the month of March, you can see the percentages up there and then just noting And then just noting the last week of March, um, was a shortened week. And hence, I think the, the lower percentage plus leading up to spring break. I think there were some, or that is, yeah, leading up to spring break. We kind of overlapped a little bit with, um, spring break. We probably had fewer kids in, in schools, so. Pretty simple there. And if you're good with that, I did want to take an opportunity, Ken and I did want to take an opportunity to give you a little preview of summer school. Um, we are really carrying up for a lot of summer programming, probably some of the largest programming we've had in a really long time. There's a lot of funding to, to back this up, obviously, through all three ESSER opportunities. Um, and there's some additional funding that we've actually recently applied for and submitted for that. Um, I believe yesterday, actually, you put it in. So this is just a very quick, high-level overview for you. Um, we've divided up elementary, middle school, and high school, and then we took a tiered approach. And as you know, on a daily basis, we operate in a multi-tiered, um, system of support. So does everybody get, would do some kids get, would do very few kids get? And so that's kind of how we approach the summer school programming as well. Um, we are once again partnering with GRASP, which is a correspondence program for all kids, um, K-8. We are paying for half of the cost for all families that want to participate in the elementary level. So we're using some of that grant funding that we got to offset the cost for our families for that. And they have an option to do paper pencil or online. All that information is actually going out at the end of April to all of our families about that. For middle school, they are going to fund 100% for math. And then they're also looking at a different option using ExactPath. So parents will have an option there of what programming they would want to use and participate in. And then again, that information's going to go out, I believe, at the end of this month as well. And taking it a step back, so that's kind of for everybody, high school, it's so technical. It's all credit recovery. So you'll be paying for all students who need the credit recovery to have their credit recovery options, their online courses. For tier two, so now we're kind of funneling down for some kids. We are looking at an in-person, more intensive experience for elementary kids coming in three days a week, three hours a day, and receiving instruction in ALA, math, and, um, social-emotional learning. Also phonics and all that good stuff is in there as well. That's invitation-based, and so we kind of really took, um, an equity approach to that. We looked at all of the needs of all of our buildings K-5, and we let our data dictate our needs. So originally, we were planning on like, oh, we're only going to offer one through five because kindergarten has had the most normal year so far. Our data said otherwise, we're going to offer, um, kindergarten as well. We're, we're running 10 sections of an elementary summer school. So that's not all equal. Might be one fifth, one fourth, three firsts. The data's deciding where to put our people and our efforts. Um, same thing for middle school. They're offering, they're offering an accelerated option for kids, and then they're also offering an in-person summer school where the data's going to decide and have an invitation as well. And then even more intense for some kids might be additional targeted Title I support and small group intervention. We're also hiring a special ed teacher who will be working summer school, which we don't normally do. They'll be overseeing the COVID recovery services that are required through the COVID plan for some kids, but also will be helping kids meet their goals based on their IEPs. So I wanted to, again, we're still really working through all this planning, but we're making, I'm just trying to hand it all down before I go on, Lee. It's a big, it's a big.
Yes, please.
Okay, so your last comment with the IEP. So are, are these kids that already have a 504 and IEP? Or are these kids outside of that that are just struggling based on?
It could be.
Could be either or. It's inclusive to whomever.
So their data's deciding if they're being invited.
When you say data, like, tell me what that, what do you mean data? From the principal, from their teacher?
We go into HEDRIM, which is our system that operates and holds all of our, our data. So like all the fast data, all their health PP data, and all that stuff. Whether or not they have an IRRIT. So for some grade levels, we have like 15 data bits. So we kind of went through, and so we're also tiering the kids. There's going to be a first group of kids that we're going to invite first based on their need. Second group of kids, if so, if some families don't commit, then we can drop down to the second list. But, um, yeah, that's the beauty of collecting all the information for a little bit of the kids.
Dan.
Thank you. Um, this is only open to Oxford students, correct?
Correct. The other thing I should add is we're really working hard with OVA too and looking at the transfer process of like who's going to come back to seated and like what their progress has been at OVA. And we are also making sure that those kids that might need a little, um, kind of transition period, have that before they come back to the seated run that they're giving away for a year. So again, we're looking at their data as well.
Dan.
Thank you. Since this seems, appears in all likelihood is going to be quite larger than it ever has been in the past because of the circumstances, are, how are we sitting, this might be a question for Dave. How are we sitting, um, with employees, however, they're going to, do we have enough teachers, uh, available or wanting to do summer school in order to fulfill our obligations that we're making to families that are accepting it?
So I can, that's what I have. I needed 10 teachers and I had 18 apply.
Okay, very good.
Um, so I've been running through some like interviews to kind of help narrow down, um, that. Obviously, if they would be special ed, if they want special ed teacher, they'd reapply. So it's been really nice using this money to break off the hourly rate. Um, we're also very strategic with how we ran it to make sure teachers didn't feel burnt out. And we're like running a summer school Monday through Friday that they got along with each other. We had enough of a break, um, as well.
Very clear.
Mary.
Thank you. Do we have any idea what the new summer nutrition program might look like and how that's going to tie in with all this? Uh, maybe that'll help break more cases?
Yeah, so we are, you can help add, add if you need to, Catty. We are centrally housing most of our summer programming at OES. So summer care through OELC will be, will be housed at OES. The summer school will be housed at OES, and summer feeding will also be housed there. If you want to come up and get anything.
For the safety of our students that are going to be there, we are not having an open site. But we will still do distribution because we're still giving away about 150 even a week. So we will still have that, but it all has to be done at OES.
Anita, uh, is tier three, from a scheduling perspective, just laid over tier two? So it's also nine hours, it's also three days a week?
Yeah, then it just might be more staff pushing in to support while the kids are there.
And transportation provided?
Transportation will be provided for some students and likely through for our Title I students.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Yes, Mary.
One more comment, just, um, I wanted to be sure that, um, everybody who knows who's listening too. These are one-time use funds, right, um, because the ESSER funding. Now, is any of the funding that we would plan on using connected to the funds that the legislature's holding up? Is that that same pocket of, did Mr. Thromm know that? Is that supposedly part of that same group of money? I don't need to get you started. I just want to be sure our public knows what's happening in Lansing, too.
So we, we have received a portion of ESSER II funds. There are still, um, a lot of funds in Lansing that have not been appropriated. While, um, while we would get some of those non-appropriated funds, um, it's not as much for us as what has already been appropriated, all right? And that basically is just because the majority of the funds that are not appropriated have to do, I believe, with, um, I don't want to say free and reduced, but, um, your, your, your title, some Title I dollars. And, um, and while we do have a title school, it's not like, you know, that the majority of our students are that, right? And so, um, that's a long way of saying, yep, we, we still are missing some funds, but I think with what we already have appropriated, um, with all of our funds together, I think we've got enough money to do what we need to do. So for us, um, those non-appropriated funds are not holding us up, I'll say it that way.
The other thing I'll add is there, I, so if you look at under elementary, every building will run a reading engagement program as well. Meaning just for any kid wants to participate in keeping on reading over the summer. So fun activities, getting on books, um, checking in with teachers. That's through at-risk funding, so we have plenty of money earmarked in at-risk. So we're able to even add at-risk funding that we normally plan to this as well. So we're in pretty good shape.
Dan.
Thank you. Um, this may come across as not being in the know, um, summer school, um, happenings every year. Is, is this something that most districts are doing to help fill any of the learning gaps that had happened over this past year? Or is this something that, um, we are taking the initiative to say, you know what? We know, we, we know what the gaps are. We're going to go out and we're going to do what we're supposed to do as educators. I guess, how does it look in other districts, or I guess, do we even know?
We do know. We've been collaborating quite a bit with a lot of districts around us through like Oakland County, um, meetings, but also who's I feel us that worked together and, um, off ideas, like with Lake Moraine, what are you doing, how are you handling this? So I would say the answer to your question is both. Most, if not all, districts are definitely offering some more intense summer programming than, than is normally offered. For us, it's much more different. Like Lake Moraine, as an example, runs a program every year, but it's tuition-based. So they're able to do, um, this and they get community members to pay quite a bit of tuition to attend. That's not something we had done in the past to my knowledge, but I feel when exploring in, in the future where this is going to be completely paid our families. Um, there's nothing for them to, to worry about to, to coming. And, and that's the position that most districts are finding themselves in now, is they're being able to offer way more to pay their staff, also offset all the costs for, for their families.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Anything else? Thank you.
I think we have, uh, next, a reconfirmation.
Yep. So, uh, prior to putting a motion on the floor, this is an, uh, the opportunity for, to open this up to the public. For anyone here from the public that would want to speak on the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan, raise your hands if you'd like to talk. Seeing no one, we can move on to the motion. Would someone like to put this motion on the floor? Heather.
Move to approve the reconfirmation of the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan is presented.
Thank you. Support? Dan, support, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anita, thank you very much. All right, number nine, policy. We have the first reading of, of policy number 3131 and 5460. Heather, you normally do this kind of policy stuff for us, so why don't, let's keep that train going.
Move to approve the first reading of policies number 3131, staff reductions, recalls. Policy number 5460, graduation requirements is presented.
Thank you very much. Is there support? Mary, support, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Unscheduled audience participation, is there anyone? I didn't introduce this at the beginning, but is there anyone who would like to speak to that?
We have a card we need to fill out, too.
I already pulled one out.
Can I have that card just so that I can?
No, this is my piece of data.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Please start.
Um, I am a prom parent of a student that's a senior here at the school. And I understand that the senior prom is not being held accordingly, like a dance. They are bringing in a magician. My daughter's 18 years old. She does not want a magician for her senior prom. I don't know if any of you all have a senior right now, but I don't think that that's what they want because I don't think that's what we have. Neither did the class before them or any of the other classes. And the classes behind them won't get that either. So I understand that there's an option of doing an outdoor prom event. If we don't do something for them as a dancing opportunity, then things are going to turn, that people are going to do their own thing. And then they're going to have a different situation. My thing is, is you can do that here. Let that senior class have a senior prom for them. They have been robbed of so much. I feel so bad for them. They pay their whole time. They get no home to go to dance. They get no dinner stuff. They can't go to the basketball games. They couldn't even go to their own football games. And now we're telling them that they get a magician for their senior prom. How can we make this better for them? Let them go out, at least with one bed. Let them have fun. They didn't remember where the class that they didn't get to do nothing. And I don't know about you, but I don't think that that's fair. I get it, we're in a crazy time. But my goodness, if we're going to loosen the strings and invite parents in for IEPs and 504s, don't you think we can loosen the strings for one night of 200, 300 some kind of kids? And not everybody goes to the prom. I would invite as many of those seniors to go, but I know that not all of them will go to the prom. Some of them will not go because their date is a junior. But my thing is, is my daughter has been to almost every single dance that the high schools offer, with or without a date, and she is beyond herself that they're not going to have a prom where they can dance the night away and celebrate their year. Please. For their mental health. Oh, we have something. I feel so bad for them. I mean, think of it if it was your kid. Think of it if it was your son or daughter, would you work that? I know the class of 2020 didn't get a prom, but they got a junior prom. This class didn't get a junior prom, and now you're telling them that they get a magician? I don't think that that's what they want. I don't think that that's fair that they haven't had anything. I have ideas. That's what I spent all day today on my planning time. That's what I spent all day today on my planning time, is going over ideas of where, how you can put the football field to use and things that parents, I know, I know parents would come and help me that great, and they would want to make that night successful for them and to be respected. Please reconsider. Please reconsider not having a magician for their senior prom. Let them have something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just to reiterate, your desire is for us to look at a reconsideration of something more than a magician for the senior prom. And you have some ideas about possibly using the football field as an outdoor event. I just, I just want to make sure that you know that you were heard.
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. And fill out a card so that we please, so we have information on all that and, and abilities to contact you. And please thank that and know that we appreciate your, your sharing your thoughts. This, it, it, it is, this has been hard and.
Extremely hard.
Yes.
It's extremely hard for them.
We get it, we get it.
It's not, it's not us.
Yep.
It's them. Let's put them first for what?
Understood. I hear you. All right, thank you very much. Anyone else in unscheduled audience participation? All right. Below you have a, a list of scheduled activities. You can be taking a look at that. Mr. Throne, anything for clarification?
Yeah, maybe I'll just say a couple of comments. So actually cabinet met with high school administration this morning to specifically talk about the prom. And the, I'll, I'll say the two main things that we came away with was that graduation at DTE was the number one priority. We wanted to make sure that, that we, we could do whatever we could to offer that to them there. And then the second thing was that in regard, in regards to prom is that the high school could look into having a prom and what all that means. But I, I guess I just, I guess what I want you to know is that independent of our wishes individually, collectively at the high school, or even as a school district, we have regulations that we cannot break. And so, yeah, I just want you to know that, that we, we understand that. We've heard that from kids. But at the same time, you know, we have to abide by the laws and rules of which we're under right now. And so I know the high school is doing good. They, they have conversations almost daily, not only about graduation, about prom, about the all-night party. And I got complete confidence that, that they'll, they'll do what they can.
Can I ask, what's the difference between the two? Senior all-night party being held at the Legacy Center? Tickets are being sold as we speak versus the prom? This one is being funded by the parents or being led by the parents? Or I'm not understanding the difference between the two.
I'll, I'll answer this. Really, I would encourage you maybe even as early as tomorrow to make an appointment with Mr. Wolf. It's really the high school that's, that's working with the leadership class and, and all of the students here and surveying the seniors as far as what their priorities are. And so I would just, I would encourage you to reach out directly to the high school admin. But to answer your question directly, the biggest thing is it's not, the all-night party is not a school-sponsored event. We're not in charge of it. We don't run it. It's not at our facility. We don't pay for it.
Yeah. And, and said, said another way, then it's their responsibility to meet the law. And if they do or don't, then that's up to them. But we are required. See, one of the things that we need, you and as well as the public, don't think we don't remember being teenagers. This has been grueling. But at the end of the day, we're making a choice of breaking the law or not. If you want changes, change the law. If you want changes, change who's in charge. Because we, if we want to keep our doors open and keep kids coming in every day, we can't have anybody coming to us and saying, you broke the law. They will lock us down and stop us from doing what we've done all year long, which is be one of the only districts in this area who has stayed open. We can't put that at risk. If you want change, we're the ones, we'll, we'll have a prom tomorrow if you get them to change the law. We have to obey the law. And that's the big difference between what might happen at the Legacy Center and what has to happen here if we, we do something. Is that fair enough? Final board comments? Corey?
Yeah, I'll, I'll kind of sympathize with you, Wendy. I think a lot of the frustration came in when a lot of the kids were branded pulling an outside hand and we're getting a magician, and I know that's where a lot of the frustration came in. I, I share your sympathy. My daughter said, Dad, it's a waste, I'm not going. So I, I get it. I know they're going to look and do what we can, but I do sympathize because I've got ones that won't go. And I've paid $700 bucks for a dress to sit in the closet that's not going to be used.
I got you.
So I, I share your sympathy, Wendy.
Thank you, Corey. Anyone else with those comments? Dan?
Thank you, Tom. You know, first and foremost, there is a, as Tom said, the law. As much as we agree, don't agree, however that looks in your personal view of where things are at right now. Our first and foremost responsibility is to educate. And when you have a, when you have a, a time out of tradition such as prom that this particular class is, is really, is going to miss their junior year and their senior year, you feel very, very bad for them. And you can't replace it. You can, you cannot get, there's one thing that I have, I have learned. Both kids going through school and now gone, you never get the time back. You never get the memories back. We, early on during this whole pandemic, took a lot, a lot of heat as board members for being face to face and giving parents a choice, students a choice to have an education. And we knew when we did that there were going to be a lot of sacrifices. And unfortunately, this senior class has had to take the brunt of those choices. So for a board member, I would sincerely like to tell you as a parent and your, your child that we, we do not regret the decisions that we've made to keep our district open. I personally regret, I'm not speaking for the board, the opportunities that they have done, that they have missed. And so I know we got really good people in here in this building, and they work really, really hard. And if there's a solution, they're going to find it. So I, I, I hope things get a lot better at the state level. That will allow us to have some sort of opportunity like that. But I, I think everybody needs to realize that, as President Donnelly said, we have to follow the law. And we would be setting a poor example by doing anything other than that. So again, I, I feel for you, because it's just as much of a bad for the parents as it is for the students and certainly the seniors.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? All right, my only last comment is heed what Mr. Throne said, and, and please see Mr. Wolf. And, and let's see, let's see. Mr. Throne, anything on, on other?
I do. I have one item tonight.
Okay.
And that is that the Michigan Association, Association of School Boards is pleased to acknowledge the accomplishment of some of our board members and our district as a whole for their achievements in 2020. We're proud of our board members who use their valuable time to improve their leadership effectiveness by completing individual and board development courses. And I notified that Mr. Bailey received the Certified Board Member Award as well as the Award of Merit. Mr. Griffith received the Certified Board Member Award as well as Award of Merit. And Mrs. Hanser received the Award of Distinction and the Advocacy Skills Specialty. So Corey, Chad, Mary, congratulations. Thank you for your continued hard work on our board and, and teaching these classes.
And that's it?
That's all I have.
All right, very good. Then I get to adjourn the meeting. It's a great day to be a what? Wildcat. This meeting is adjourned.